Privacy protocols aligned with both FERPA and COPA regulations. With only authorized personnel having access to any student information. Because we do put their names in, we do put their student email addresses. That's the main, I guess identifying information that is in the Lincoln program would be their, their student email address and their, their student username. They, he indicated that it's a, um, a secure tutoring experience. The AI tutor provides real time support based solely on the lesson the student is viewing. It does not require access to transcripts or any personal history. And, um, the micro, there, there is no requirement even for microphone input for them to interact with that, um, that tutor. And then the last thing he noted was that, um, Lincoln has publicized, they have, um, formal guiding principles that emphasize transparency, equity, and privacy in all of their AI implementations. And so, um, kind of my thought is even without assurance from them, I want to be, um, upfront with our community members that may access this tutor, right? And so the first thing that I, I definitely want to do is it will not be automatically a part of our student online users. Um, a kid who signs up, whether it's for the French classes or full-time mixed cyber, they would continue to sign up for the same package or program, um, that we've offered in previous years. And then if a student, whether it's a student with IEP needs or whether it's any student, truthfully, if, if we have a meeting, if there's a student who is struggling, who is asking for an additional layer of support, um, we would be able to know that we have available to them, you know, this add-on. Again, it's $25 per course, but still really in, in the scheme of things, it's, it'd be $200 approximately for a full cyber student to add that on, um, in terms of the cost. But that we would, if there was a student that is, we're considering adding that for, it would then be through a, a meeting or communication with the student and the parent about, hey, this is, this is what's available for Lincoln. Are you comfortable with the idea of a, an added AI component? Um, Lincoln did share some links with me in terms of resources, a little video on how it works that I would share with any parents who are considering adding that for their students. And so, um, I do share the same concern, right? I see the, the value and the possible benefit of, um, utilizing AI technology. But I also know that it needs to be with, you know, cautious steps with guidelines with, um, with those things in mind. So, um, I hope that it was maybe brief enough, and if there are any questions, happy to, happy to hear them. Yes, Mr. Leisure. So I think that would be my recommendation is that, um, the agreement itself just outlines all services that would possibly be available. But our, what we're actually offering to the typical student on a base level would not include the AI tutor. The AI, AI tutor would be available through that agreement, but it wouldn't be the default setting for the courses. That, that's what I would recommend, yes.
So we would basically be getting the same thing that they currently had. But if they need help, we can say, hey, there's this additional tool.
Yeah, it would not be, it would not be automatically part of their courses unless they elected and opted to say, hey, we would like that extra layer, absolutely.
I think that was a concern.
Mm-hmm.
Um, another concern that I would have was, would you act as a student at Lincoln and see what the AI is telling? So that we have a better understanding other than just their.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can ask them, yeah, I, I will ask them and set up a demo and I can get in and maybe have a couple of teachers get in and, and be eyeballs on it, absolutely. That's a good idea before, and, and we can do that before we have any, any student even elect into it. Um, that way we can have a, a little more understanding, sure. Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a problem at all, yep.
I mean, you're the ones that are in the know and I would.
So my question would be, um, I guess it's not really a question, it's more, more of less a statement. Um, the statement they provided that AI or tutor does not collect or store student data. Um, but in the description of the Lincoln Empowered Course Solution, it's Video AI Tutored Power by Prof. Jim. It says, "Students can engage in two-way video interactions, ask questions in real time, and receive adaptive support tailored to their responses." That means that that AI is indeed learning from that student on how to respond to them. So it is collecting some biometric data from them, whether it's, you know, full-blown or minimal. But it could even be emoji reaction, you know, I don't know. But it, it is collecting something if it is able to tailor their responses, tailor to the children's responses, the students' responses. Um, so to me, it contradicts what it's saying we're getting versus what they're saying it doesn't do. Um, that's concerning to me. I do like that it's not going to just be included in the basic, um, the base curriculum and that it would be an add-on, so to speak. Um, and it, it would be, I'm assuming it would be something, like you mentioned, it would be offered to the student if they're struggling or have some kind of IEP or 504 plan or something like that in place. Um, if we were not to check the box with this agreement, can we not go back to it in the future?
Yeah, so I think.
Could we not check it now? You have your demo and, and teachers look at it and see what's going on with it? And then could we come back to this later?
Yeah, that certainly is, is an option. And to your, to your point about what they're saying that the, the tutor offers. So the, they're, it's built on their core shells is my understanding. And so if a student is in, say, biology class and it asks the program a question about the biology information, the machine learning of it is based on the, the course content in the biology class on their, their stock core shell, right? But the, the machine learning, and this is also to your point, it's, it's taking the information that's input. And this is, you know, if anyone has, has used ChatGPT, right, or another chatbot, you type in information, it reads that information and then provides back a response. Um, and so I, I, I totally see and hear where you're coming from on there. Yes, they're saying there's not data collected, they're not taking, you know, their, their name and, and, you know, student ID number and all of that. Um, and, and I think part of what he said on there, only their authorized personnel will have access to that. But again, I, I don't want to minimize concerns, right? I want to, I want to address them, um, together and, and head on. And so we could certainly not check the box and at any point I could go back to the rep and say, hey, we do want that AI tutor available to us. Um, and, and actually on a first draft of the agreement, he didn't have it listed as even one of the op. He, he had talked to me about it, he didn't list it as one of the items on that agreement. When I asked him about it, he said, well, he said, at any point if you have kids that want to use the AI tutor, just reach out and say, hey, we want the AI tutor for this class. And he would just throw it in. I kind of thought it was more, this was just my thinking on it, it was better to have the agreement list everything that a student possibly could have access to as opposed to going outside the agreement itself and giving a kid an AI tutor that we hadn't even reviewed or talked about. Um, another option, whether the box is checked or not, and I would, I would certainly, you know, collaborate together on this, we can say, hey, let's, we, you know, Lincoln is working well for us, but at this time, we don't want to offer any student the AI tutor. Whether it's a, a box on the agreement or not, right? We can just have a, a district understanding that, um, until further discussion or until, you know, the admin team as a whole reviews it, or to Mr. Leisure's point, if we, um, if we preview it on the teacher side, I would be fine with, you know, whatever on the, the agreement, if it's a box or not a box of just our shared understanding being no student will use the AI tutor, um, until we further discuss it or recommend that that become accessible. So I, I'm, I'm supportive of whichever, you know, is, is, uh, our collective best, um, best effort. And if we were to use it again, it was, the thought process would be strictly to help students and that the parent and the student would have understanding of what an AI tutor is, how it works, that it's not a teacher, but that it would give them input and, and feedback, um, like a chatbot would with the, the AI capacity, so.
Right, right. And I, I think that, that's part of a lot of my concern is a lot of times parents don't understand everything that's being offered or everything their students are using until, I know there were a lot of things I didn't know were being used until COVID hit and we're watching our kids do school on the laptop and we're like, oh, I didn't know you used that or this or whatever. Um, and now we're back to that, even though they're at home, it's still something that maybe parents just don't, don't know of or are aware of. Um, so if, if the board, and this is just for clarification, it might even be more of a question for you, Ms. Hall. Um, if we were to, if we were to approve this without the box check and you decide, um, you've, I don't want to say you decide, you, you do your thing with looking more into it and you bring it back to the board and say, this is what we found out and we all agree to it, would there have to be a new agreement that we would have to agree to with that box check? Or is it something that would even have to be brought back to the board for approval? Or I think that's where, it, does, does my question make any sense?
Okay. I think that it's, it's gonna have to, it's gonna alter the original agreement by checking that box. So I do think you see a new agreement. I don't, I would think that none of the terms would change. We would just sign a new agreement with the box check, that that's really all it is, you know? It doesn't seem like it would be a big deal at all to bring it back before the board and re-sign a new agreement on the same terms.
No, and I, I'll jump in there that I, I don't think that would be an issue at all. And honestly, I, for the same reason it was on the, the first agreement presented, I wouldn't want to implement an AI tutor beyond, like, if, if we have an agree, the agreement and it's, even if we theoretically could, right, which I think theoretically, like, you probably could, right? Like, I could probably reach out to Lincoln and say, hey, we want this added for this kid for these courses. Um, based on the importance of that trust and collaboration, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel right doing that and just saying, okay, we, we've looked at it, we've talked about it, we'll add it. So I would say if, if, if we go ahead without the AI tutor box check, and I'm, I'm fine with that, by the way. Like, I would, you know, totally, totally on board, I would, I would support either way. Um, then if we investigate further. You know, you know, possible misunderstanding of when it came in or what the, the process was. So that, that'd be my two cents is I would personally want the agreement back on if we didn't put it on the, the one today.
Okay. And I mean, that would be my preference too, I think that that's the prudent.
That'd be your recommendation.
I have just one.
I am.
I, I've had just one thought. I think that we find ourselves hearing all this stuff about AI as we see it today, very fluid and it's moving and who knows where it's going, but we do need to lose sight of, we've used it. If you've ever used the Alex program for math for kids, it does track the student, vast student and give them back the things they're successful in. And the only one looking that, at that information is the teacher. Now those students can put Mickey Mouse as their name, so they're not keeping the student's personal information. I just think that that gets kind of cluttered. I don't know, maybe it's the way they worded it. I think what, since we don't know how far this goes, not having the box is probably the best option for us right now. But I, that's our, it's not brand new.
Yeah, no, yeah. AI is a technology.
If you're smart, and I think the other thing that we're working on and we're trying as fast as we can, we know that from a perspective of a policy, we need to have guardrails. So I'm, I'm, again, I, I also sign off on this idea, let's go ahead, agree to it today, minus the AI chat. Because we, I would rather have an AI policy that puts out there for students or our teachers and our moms and dads, this is where we're going. And we're still not there, we're getting there, but for now, we're gonna have the same program we had last year. We'll, we'll learn more about it and then I think we'll be able to make a more responsible choice in the future.
And, and it's not even that I'm totally against the idea of it, it's just, it is moving fast. I, I remember speaking against the, the ELA curriculum and the math curriculum about those particular aspects of it. Couple of years ago, three years ago, four years ago, whatever, however long ago it was now. Because it's always been a concern of mine, collecting data from these kids, mining data from these kids. I've heard, I've heard concerns of Fourth Amendment violations with ed tech. I mean, to put it out there, so we have to be cautious of it.
Absolutely.
And so I appreciate.
Yeah, I know, and I. Thank God, yeah, sorry. I'd say my, and my last two cents would be I, I would feel best not having it offered, right? Like I, you know, you can make the case for it, but I think whatever, anything we proceed with from an AI standpoint is important, we're unified on it and we all have done our due diligence, so yeah, I'm totally supportive of that and all. Um, you know, I don't think I even need to get back to Lincoln, right? Because we'll just note that we've approved it without the, the option for the AI tutor and we'll, we'll roll from there. So thank you, Dr. Colson. Thank you guys.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Awesome, no problem.
Okay, uh, we, this past year, uh, the full school year, we went through a special education audit. Um, and that takes a lot of time and effort by a lot of individuals. Um, we came through it very good. There were some findings though, and from findings you have, uh, areas that, uh, PD through the state audit wants us to address. So Kelly Amate is here tonight to speak about, a little bit more about the audit, the findings, and then some, um, ideas to address those findings, so Ms. Amate.
Well, thank you very much. Can you hear me now? Thanks. Um, inside your folder, you're going to see the presentation and then also there is a summary packet that includes all of the information that is provided, just for full transparency, what all is included, what happens in this monitoring, what inventory is taken, checklist, interviews, file reviews, everything that makes this so, you know, is a huge project. And, you know, shout out to, you know, the previous administrator here in the special ed team who, you know, really put their best efforts forth last year to really gather just peel is absolutely fantastic. And, um, that's why the results are as good as they are. But with anything, they show room for growth. And so that's what I want to just kind of highlight with you here today, go through some things, some statistics, and then like Dr. Oberkastet planned, hopefully to proactively get ahead of it and su- support our students and keep the ones that we have here and bring some of the ones that are out back to us and support them, so. So we always start with, you know, the things that we already know. But I just kind of wanted to make the connection here to where our spec- special education plan is part of the puzzle that goes with our comprehensive plan. And, you know, that was looked at. The plan that goes forward really focuses on the three starred items here. You know, attendance, we want our students to attend, when do they attend? Obviously when they're supported here at school and every, all of their needs are being met. Our high expectation is evident. And I think one of the staggering information that I came across is the stats of our young special ed education staff. And we want, we have the best, I feel we have the best, I'll stand on that. And you're gonna meet another. Hopefully someone here this evening is just gonna join our crew that will, uh, can. Hopefully, someone here this evening is just gonna join our crew that will, uh, can bring here, and I hope he stays forever. So here we are, so special ed population here, this is based on our school numbers last year. Okay, we have a total, and this is different right now, but this was as of, you know, the end of the school year, when the, you know, when they do their collection. Three hundred and twenty-three students are receiving services of some kind. Now, that's from the smallest end of the continuum all the way to the end, you know, least amount of needs to the most needs that we have. So that's about twenty-one, twenty-one and a half percent of our students are receiving services. Okay, this again is just a review of the monitoring. The Bureau of Special Education, they come on site, they also interviewed, uh, family members, administrative staff, some of our teachers, they looked at all of the paperwork, all the legalities, all the compliance, file reviews and things like that. And I guess, I pulled a couple out of the, of the packet that you have, but for the most part, under the star, that's everything that we had that showed that we were in compliance and following the law. And not that we weren't following the law on the other side of things, but there perhaps were something, a box not checked on a document, a goal that could have been written more specific to the student's needs, something small like that could be a reason for like the out of compliance. As you see on the right, that's kind of where your eye goes, that bottom right column, for the, uh, the transitions, and I can speak to that one, it was a, a simple, you know, a student is interested in welding, but the goal was kind of more specific to a goal that they had before they chose welding. So it didn't really match specifically, but it was super relevant. So that's just an easy fix, but it's just something that's easy to address and just kind of overlook with that one. So this is the plan, what do we, what happens next with these results? Um, you'll see on the right side with all of the no's, that means that we do not have to do an improvement plan. That doesn't mean we won't improve on what we're doing, but the state is not requiring us to do any further action. Um, you'll see, there are two ones on the left side. Uh, the top one is the least restrictive environment, and every time I've seen most of these summaries, there's always a one here for most school districts, because you always want to monitor those numbers to make sure that your students are being serviced in the least restrictive environment possible. The participation in our PSSA and PASA testing, that is nothing that we have to continue to do if the school improvement plan fulfills that requirement. So it's just making sure our students are showing up and taking the state mandated tests that are provided to them. Okay, so here's what special education looks like at McGuffey School District. Okay, you'll see the five boxes at the very bottom are district level programs. So we currently do have a life skills program supporting our life skills K to twelve students, and then our gifted talented students also as K to twelve. Claysville Elementary, we do have learning support K to five, year two for the following programs of autistic support and emotional support. Jill Walker has the learning support, but also has the availability to receive the services that they need, you know, at the other elementary, middle school. You'll notice just the learning and emotional support, high school learning support, and then the district wide. So you'll see some boxes have a little bit more included than the other boxes, and that's the goal, is to be able to provide the services K to twelve, so that when we are supporting students emotionally in grade six to eight, and they go to the high school, their services are a little more unique and tailored to their emotional needs, and that they're not being serviced in a learning support classroom when emotionally they need a little bit more support. So I know we've talked about what does that look like moving forward, so here we are, hoping to address and plan for it, so that all of those boxes look very similar to, to each other, so all students at all grade levels are able to benefit. So it's the what, where are we right now, what has to happen? We do have to develop an improvement plan to address our LRE compliance, that's the least restrictive environment. That is due to the state by October twenty-ninth. We want to continue to support our newer programs with professional development and training. We have patent support in place for year two, they, all of our staff attended a patent bootcamp last year, professional development, um, they worked with us, they visited the classroom, they supported the teachers, it really was beneficial. They're also going to be doing a year one program, even though it's our year two of emotional support, but now we have the supports in place to really build and grow that program so that it's beneficial to the students. The plan for the continuum of special education across grade levels, that was the slide right before that, and then obviously, our goal is always to make sure that all of the pieces kind of align with our priorities, our mission, our goal, and student success. So this is my how proposal, and so this is what I kind of like to dive in today as to why I feel that this is beneficial. Go back before my time here, I understand when I spoke with the special ed staff when I first returned here, you know, the questions of, oh, and it was really, it was really beneficial, it was a difference when our lead support teacher, who was contracted through the IU at that time, was no longer with us. And so I didn't know what that role was like, or what they did, but then once I, you know, surveyed the staff, and that seemed to be the one thing that kept coming up to me, and I was like, okay, you know, I'll put it on the, that's not a today, April, May thing, but here we are, and now this is where we are. Okay, so this is a staggering graphic for me. What I would like to do is bring back that McGuffey support teacher for this, I could just go on and on, but I won't. Um, the special ed teaching staff right now, we will have twenty-four special ed teachers. Thirteen of them, which is fifty-four percent of our special ed staff are non-tenured, meaning they're in their first three years of continuous service in the McGuffey School District. Including eleven, that's the, the green and the orange, okay? So they need a lot of support, and we're gonna keep them, and we want to make sure that they're doing and supported with everything that they need to support the most neediest of students, even on the end of the spectrum to, you know, just needing a little bit of extra help and support. So one of the main goals for this lead support teacher is to support our staff growth. You'll see under there, we do, that's our paraprofessional staff. The red indicates they're working one-on-one with a student. Our blue are our staff that support our emotional support program. We have staff that support learning support, K to twelve, and we also have those that are assigned specifically to life skills, and those that are assigned specifically to support our artistic support classrooms. So that's the staggering numbers in my mind, like, I knew we had a young staff, but I didn't realize that it was fifty-four percent of our special ed staff. The other thing, I mean, what special ed is all about, are, you know, federal and state mandates, and ensuring compliance and consistency, this role will review all of those paperwork boxes and things like that, that, you know, are very important and can easily lead you into a, an avenue that you don't want to pursue. That compliance file review would look very different, you know, if the paperwork is something that's overlooked. Um, this person will also attend all the K to twelve IEP meetings, and as a family member, I can't imagine not finding the benefit of that consistency of having that one leader that's in, in present at all times in, in an IEP meeting. So even a kid in sixth grade that goes to seventh, their case manager changes, but there's that, that, that familiar face of someone who recognizes the understanding of how important it is to provide the services. And always at the bottom, we always want to be legal and protect our student rights, and we always want to make sure our students are in the appropriate placement. Another thing that I understand is a very important role for our lead support teacher, you know, is that in family and community engagement that we have, strengthening our partnerships, improving that IEP participation, because it's a familiar face, it's someone that wants their students to succeed, they have the experience and leadership in, you know, in their skill set. Um, and then again, understanding student success, and we always want to have that, that goal of continuously improving. Then that leads into, who, who, who makes these programs flourish and build in grade six through twelve? And so one of the focus for this role will also be develop the targeting programs. Now, that allows us to travel to the sites that some of our out of district students are in. What do those programs look like, what do they offer that we could perhaps offer here? What, you know, how are they doing there? Are they ready to transition, transition back? And if they're not, what can we do to possibly provide those services so that we're bringing back our students that we could service here? Now, let me practice that, there, there is, there is the general rule that, you know, not every student would be best suited in a public school. There are needs, and there are severe cases, or not even severe cases, but just a level of needs where it, it is appropriate to be, because they are phenomenal programs as well. So I don't want to say that, you know, out of district is necessarily negative, but I'm gonna move on with some stats that show you how many students we service now, and how many more we could potentially service and keep. Yeah, and not lose, here it is. Okay, back again, we have three hundred and twenty-three special ed students. We service twenty-eight in our new, two new elementary programs, okay? And as of today, we have nineteen total out of district students. So those twenty-eight students could potentially not be in that box if we didn't offer them the type of services that we have in place right now. Over the summer, we did transition two out of district students, they attended our extended school year program. We put in a transition plan, and they will be serviced in those two elementary programs. We had two in-state transfers that had some needs that we were able to keep in the district and service them in those two programs as well. So, that's that. Now, million dollar question, how do we support this financially, and how do we support students? So this is some of the cost savings, and some of the, you know, pieces that I would like to present to you as to what we have already in place. And, um, you know, access reimbursement program is something that, you know, was kind of new to me, and I went through and made sure that I understood what was eligible-based access expenditures, and then also with our paraeducators, making sure that they are certified in terms of whatever they need to do to be able to bill when applicable for those services. Going in the fall, we are neighboring with, with a neighboring school district and sharing, sharing the transportation costs to travel students to one of our out of districts, so that half is where, you know, it's fifty percent of what we would be, be paying to transport one of our out of districts, so. Also, you guys were very important, and I appreciate the understanding of making these possibility things happen. Our nurse assistant is now non-contracted, they are a district McGuffey employee. We're not dealing with the high turnover that we had, we're also not, not sure of the quality that we're getting, and they become one of us. Same thing with our speech and language therapists after this evening. I hope we have the two and a half McGuffey School District in place to service our students. And then, um, the lead support teacher was contracted out when we had this position in the past, and, you know, the recommendation is to bring, or not necessarily to bring someone, and we have great staff here, and I'm very confident in the skill set that we have that it, someone is easily, I mean, I could pick eleven out of the eleven that are tenured and qualified to do so, but, you know, I think the interest would be there. So my request would be to, you know, grant us the ability to, you know, post and advertise the anticipated opening, so that we can put this person in place to make sure that our students and our staff are supported for the next upcoming challenges. So again, we kind of come back to the why of all of what we do, and how I think, you know, students are going to attend when they're here at school. Our administrators, taking both hats, I know what it was like to be an administrator, I know, I mean, as a building level principal, and I know what this role now entails. You know, and knowing that the special ed population are taken care of, and you're part of the team, but you also have extreme critical eyes looking at what we can do to make our students succeed that are in the special ed department, so that a building level principal are handling all of our students, so it really provides that focus, and keeping our awesome students, teachers, and then, you know, obviously, continuing our high expectations that we have. So very happy to yield any questions, I know that's a lot, and especially when you get to the executive summary, if there is any questions that you have on that, I try to highlight it as much as possible for the, the important go how, but I'll try my best.
I have a question.
Yeah.
It might be a couple, actually.
That's a nice.
And this is probably just because I'm not super familiar with.
Sure.
Exactly what these environments are like, but what is a least restrictive environment? Like, explain to me what that is.
Sure, so that is when a student is being educated in a situation where they're included in normal and regular programming with their regular ed peers, they're fully included in lunch, recess, all of the academics, that would be the least restrictive. They're not being pulled from their general education population at all. So that's what you always want to encourage, because, well, the law also states that's important, but that's what's best for students. And there are times that they don't succeed in those settings in which you would then have to, you know, start pulling away a little bit where they're in an inclusion class or something like that. So that's what that means.
I really appreciate that, because I mean, perfect, thank you, I would just put it out there. The, you mentioned the sixth through twelfth grade, and... I don't know what page this would be, in the slide, how do we support students while being financially responsible? Is, is it only, am I only seeing elementary here, and is there, did I miss where there was discussion about, or is there not really a need in the higher level?
Were you in this slide here? This one.
That's what you're asking for, is, I apologize, I was going through, and I see it there.
Yeah, that's where the program needs are not in place currently.
Okay, I see it now. Okay, that was all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your time.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, so, so your question is, what does that, is that cost the same? No, because when we contracted out, we were at the mercy of what the agreement was that was being offered to us. In this situation, if we have an in-house teacher who's filling in that role and we hire this position, we could hire a potentially a step one replacement for that said teacher, so that would be a huge cost savings, and we, we in the room determine what that is. Yeah. Oh, yes, long-term, yes. So that, you know, this is not a today savings, but if you think about what this looks like, so then, you know, for the fall of next year, we would look to, you know, at least open up a, you know, a program in the middle school for those fifth graders that are coming from the autistic support classroom, where do they go as a sixth grader? You know, right now, their services would look different, so then that would create that position moving forward, you know, in the start of the next school year. Oh, thank you.
Yeah. Sure.
Yes.
There's a cost. And again, I don't have thoughts on what, but also what's right to do here.
Right.
And that's where I'm excited about.
Yep, and I, when I thought of this too, with, you know, some of our students that we talk about this that are in McCyber, there may be students that aren't in that stat that could be supported, and the reason that they may have, you know, chose the McCyber route could also be that, you know, I just didn't feel like I had that support that I, that I needed when I was physically in the brick and mortar building. But we don't know those, and I know that's something that we talk about often, of how to bring those students back too. So they're not in those numbers, but I could guarantee you that there's, there's a correlation between that, absolutely.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna clarify, the McCyber students are not included in the numbers that are.
Out of, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not the out of district placements.
Right.
But that is something I could look more into of how many of our students truly are McCyber students that are also serviced for, you know, special ed needs.
Sure.
Yeah.
You may not know this number, I don't know if Dr. Oberkamp might know it, I don't know, but you're stating in your special education population, about twenty-one percent?
Correct.
My question is, in our McCyber population, do we know what that, is it near the same? Does it mean or higher, lower?
We just, we just tried to touch on that, I'm not sure. I'm looking to Dr. But yeah, they're.
No, no, a number of identified.
That are identified and have special education, they're our McCyber students.
Well, I would say twenty-four, twenty-five, just to make the numbers consistent. All right. Teamwork.
The other question I had is on the slide, did you have out of district services? We have nineteen out of district services. What percentage do we be able to bring back with what you're proposing?
Well, that's.
What would your guess be, I guess would be?
I would say right now, we did bring in two that I knew would probably be a smooth transition. Um, there are some of those cases that I, you know, I, I am aware of where, why they are where they are, and my guess is, you know, based on the current programming, not too many of them. There may be one or two that could potentially, but, you know, of those nineteen, that's pretty appropriate as their placement of where they are. We brought the ones that, you know, we felt could be supported and succeed.
So basically, we would be looking more at our McCyber students.
Perhaps, absolutely.
Coming back.
Yes.
That would have that need.
Yeah, and they may be, that, that might have been the reason that, you know, they chose McCyber.
McCyber potentially, but also again, as the slide shows, all the way from K through eighth grade, our emotional sports students are supported in-house, and it's that point, you know, leading to the high school, they have one or two options, you know, being absorbed into our regular classes or being placed out. And so that, that's an area that we've been, for many years now, we're kind of looking at that and saying, can we not do their job for, not all of them, as we know, but for some of them, keeping them here.
Okay, any others?
Do we know what the cost is, this go out versus?
It, it really.
Something internally, I mean, is it cheaper internally for us to do that?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Continually, one hundred percent, yes.
I thought so, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I saw-
So, your recommendation is we hire a lead teacher from within or post?
I would like, yes, that's my recommendation and ask today is to-
Then would we then replace that teacher with another teacher?
Yes. Yes.
So, your numbers of your percentages of your new teachers is going to increase again?
They will, but they'll be extremely supported.
I'm just kidding.
No, I know. I gotcha. All right. Well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ober.
Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
You're welcome.
All right. Speaking of, uh, money and lines of credit, as we know, here we are sitting, uh, again, with school to start in just two weeks. Uh, the PA State budget is still not in pass. This is probably the quietest I've heard from both the governor's office and the General Assembly. Um, because we are finding ourselves, um, in this situation and we're looking at, uh, one of the big things is payroll. Uh, Charlene, Mrs. Holbichak is here tonight to talk a little bit about, a little bit about, um, looking at possible lines of credit if we have to. We're not there yet, but we definitely have to start planning for if this budget pass continues into October, November. This is something we have to be very aware of.
Okay.
I might need Dr. Ober's help.
Just trying to get this light up here.
Yeah. Just plug in.
Hold on, ma'am. I can use your computer.
It's like it's thinking. My computer. I hear.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Is that fixed?
Yeah.
Sorry, man.
There, please, so that should be your computer. You might have to move, here, you put your presentation up. I'll help you real quick.
Okay, Dan.
Because then you have to move it over to the, it's on like God, screen mirroring. It's part of the left, you have a floor.
There we go. All right. All right.
There we are.
That's why Kellyanne kept looking backwards and I was like, why can't she see it on her screen? All right. Um, Dan, is there a way to put it into slideshow mode for me?
Oh, yeah.
Just hit it.
Yeah, should be, uh, should be.
There we go.
There you go. And it should be touch capable on here as well.
I don't think I need the microphone, so I'm going to stand up here just so everybody can, um, see the presentation and I can just move it to the screen. So, I'm going to throw it off again.
Don't leave the lights on, everybody online.
Oh.
Sorry.
Everybody see?
Technical issue.
I might be able to do it from here because it did come up. All right. So, again, I'm going to start with twenty-four, twenty-five as I always do. Our revenue, as you heard me say, last month, we have received over a hundred percent of our budgeted revenue. Um, that is probably all that we're going to get at this point through the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Most of that is coming from sources you see on the screen. Uh, delinquent taxes, almost three hundred dollars more than we budgeted. Our earnings on investments, our non-educational subsidies, which are things like our transportation subsidies. Also, we get a subsidy back for retirement. So, that is, some of those subsidies were over the budget. And then, again, some of that was reconciliation money from the prior year that does then hit that fiscal year of twenty-four, twenty-five. And our revenue from local sources, those are things like donations that we're getting, our range royalties, our rent that we're getting. Um, so, we did okay on the, on the revenue side. Expenditures, as of July thirty-first, we were almost up to our budget, what we had budgeted as expenditures. I'm pretty positive we're going to hit that number. We have payroll through the next pay, which is August twenty-second. That still does hit the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. So, our current and projected net position, our revenue is coming in at thirty-seven point three. Our expenditures right now are thirty-five point three, which puts us in a positive balance of one point nine million. I'm anticipating about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars still in expenditures that will hit that twenty-four, twenty-five budget. But that still leaves us with a projected positive balance of one point two million after twenty-four, twenty-five. Projection, projections. So, that's positive. Now, let's talk about twenty-five, twenty-six budget because right now it's not as positive. Um, our expenditures just for the month of July, one point six million. Now, half a million of that was a bond payment that was due August first, so we had to make that payment in July. We have another bond payment due, which I've already made the payment, uh, which will hit in August, and that one was one point four million. So, for the month of July, we have spent four point four percent of the budget. Revenue, on the other hand, is a different story. So, we budgeted thirty-five million to receive in revenue. Right now, through the month of July, we've only received two hundred and forty-four thousand. So, less than one percent of our anticipated revenue. And there's a big reason for that. The Pennsylvania state budget. The lawmakers, as you know, are a stalemate. So, our subsidies for July and August have been withheld. Last July and August, we received three point two million dollars. Our continued, if they continue to delay those subsidies to schools, we are going to have a difficult time paying our expenses through the month of September. Reason being, our real estate tax dollars really don't start getting deposited until early October. Our taxpayers have through the end of September to pay up the two percent discount. So, we'll start to see movement in early October, but it will make, it's going to put us in a very precarious situation for the month of September if the lawmakers don't move forward with the PA State budget or start releasing funds to public school systems. I'm asking tonight, a short-term line of credit to be approved for me to start investigating that just as a backup plan. This would mean I would go to our financial institutions. I would see what the best interest rates we could get on a short-term line of credit just to ensure that we can make our payroll and pay our bills for the month of October, or month of September until we start receiving some real estate tax dollars in October. Now, what you can do, contact your representative. I have sent emails this week to the three that I'm putting up here on the screens for you. Our PA State Senator for this district is Camara Bartolata. I've given you her information right here. If you go to her website, there is a contact us. You just click on that. You can fill out all of your information and your message right there and hit submit and it goes directly to her. Tim O'Neill is our PA State Representative who represents East Finley, Green Hills, Morris Township, South Franklin, and West Finley. Same with him. Go to his website, contact us, send an email. And then Josh Cale represents Blaine Township, Buffalo Township, Claysville Borough, and Donaville Township. I have, like I said, I've emailed all three of them. It is imperative that we get across they are holding hostage us community members and taxpayers by not supporting their school system by giving us our subsidies. It's also detrimental to our student programming. I've actually emailed all of our administrators and asked them to be cautious of what they're spending right now until our subsidies start to come in and not to be purchasing non-essential items at this point. But that could mean a program goes without something that could be beneficial now. So, please, reach out, all of the community members sitting here, everybody listening, reach out to your lawmakers. Tell them they need to move forward with the Pennsylvania state budget and release monies to the public school system. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Charlene, one year, several years ago, they didn't do it till December.
I know. I, I think I was working in higher ed then and they withheld all of the state subsidies for state grants for students at that time, too.
Thank you, Ms. Ober.
All right, thank you.
We have to have a budget made up.
Indeed. Uh, finally, um, every year, right before school year starts, our principals go through the student handbooks. Uh, oftentimes, there's some changes, little things like policy updates. Uh, tonight, actually, we have Mr. Brady Stoy, he's our Assistant High School Principal, to give an overview of the changes that you'll be approving tonight for the high school student handbook. So, Mr. Stoy.
So, you share the handbook with us, with us, in a certain way, it's just a class that's sort of live, it's upcoming two years. Um, so, on the changes that were made, uh, many of them were just reflect current practice. But, um, the two are, uh, I would speak to this development. First, an update in language, the fact that it's like our current version of the all-in graduating process. Previously called a senior project, um, really the basis for that, that's what you kind of start to reflect on. Whether they're making a, uh, being able to reflect any recent change, um, they have to be able to, in the public, people controlling, uh, keep this matter about that is a research. And it's a way really to get, to think about what comes next in the seniors' life. Or imagine what comes next when we start to explore the value of the whole of two-day course. Uh, the next part is, um, they've been, like, about it, it's like a digital progress report to the report card. We're moving to the digital distribution of progress reports to the report card. Uh, we, due to a new act, uh, and a new element that we have access to Power School, uh, this is basically a process that really makes more sense. It's easier to distribute these report cards and it makes easier for parents and we can get these report cards in a way that, um, is immediate. We're continuing to do the, part of the personal point that they need straightened here and let's be able to send out, um, and we're, a three-mail. And we're also going to, uh, do the, edit it out, use the report card the same way. Uh, they have to be emailed within five days at the end of each term and those will be sent out that way. However, a parent and a student may request a paper copy of their progress reports in the report card for like, you know, we provided to, uh, my parents. Um, we understand this here, uh, after three months, I was going to say that, um, we'll be done. Is there any questions?
So, we're going to digital report cards? That's what I'm hearing, not, so I-
Yeah, so there will be a way to go to digital report cards. And also utilize one of the, uh, other resources that we have in place. one of the, uh, other resources that we have in place, which reflects on the power of the, 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 uh, one that, uh, from the first century, uh, that's a digital, easier report card.
Yeah, the only, I, I think you're doing a great job, and it's a good idea, but there's a significant population that still doesn't have high-speed internet in our district. I mean, it's coming, they're working on it, but...
Um, if I just thought what's our hope today is to use a paper copy of the report card, and, uh, and, uh, they come down without a, a station, and ask them to ask, and then the box of that, you know? So, that's the caveat on the sort of, of the number.
In the elementarys, the same?
Uh, correct. Yes, uh, so, uh, same policies, the same procedures, uh, at the elementarys, middle school and high school. Um, if a parent, of course, needs it, again, they actually, if, if you're a parent using Power School, you know, uh, this is very outdated, because parents can actually check right now how this is progressing from week to week.
Yes.
However, we are still required, and we will do that, and we'll provide for families and students that need a paper copy of that. We haven't quite yet, um, communicated that with our families, and we'll also do a nice job of communicating that we're going that way, and again, I think that will also help us understand those families possibly in that situation, and we'll make...
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how would the families that don't have internet know that they're even not gonna get it? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. If, um, if a parent does, you know, call in or email and say, "Hey, I need a copy," do they have to come pick it up, or can it be mailed out to them?
Um, I would think that...
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And that, that will be a cost savings as well, because currently that is an expense each and every time that we do that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Stoy. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that, that is the final amount I have for committee. Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Ober. It is now seven oh five. I'm gonna call to close the committee meeting. We will start the regular school board meeting at seven ten, so a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess that's weird.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, break down. Yeah, this one, yeah. Yeah, okay.
I think you know, when I was here, it's always, uh, well, it is a, uh, yeah, I think, and it's probably a now thing, if more of, once they're leaving elementary school, and we don't have this program a couple years, then they do start to go out. Those who are asking, are, I think...
It's great.
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah, I, 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 I,[693.12]
So they're the two that's up.
Which probably shouldn't make it public knowledge.
My only discussion, um, Laura, do we need to change? I- I don't believe it's called Claysville Family Practice anymore. Yeah, they have a different name. Okay.
All right, they're still in that.
I don't know if it's.
I think they're still in that process. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, what we'll do with the name on the contract, which is why Claysville Family Practice. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. I need a motion to approve Claysville Elementary Bible Program at the Claysville Christian Church for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the Bible Release Program for Joe Walker Elementary for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
So moved.
Discussion?
Where is that one going to be held? And if Claysville says where it's held, does Joe Walker?
It's usually at Bethel Presbyterian, but I don't know.
I think last year at Park Avenue Baptist, but I wasn't sure if it was the same. I'm just curious because Claysville's inclusion.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. I need a motion to accept the one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollar donation from Range Resources for Joe Walker Elementary per the terms of the McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two Gifts, Grants, and Donations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. I need a motion to accept the one thousand dollar donation from Student Treasures LLC for Joe Walker Elementary per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy seven zero two Gifts, Grants, and Donations.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Need a motion to hire Mackenzie Swaro as a speech and language pathologist at Master's Step Two, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, and per the terms and conditions of the current McGuffey Education Association Agreement, impending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries.
Welcome aboard.
This is Monte.
She's joining us here. Well, she's walking. I'll- I'll explain and be thrilled to introduce her and welcome her to our McGuffey family. She is going to be our speech and language pathologist. She's a proud graduate of California University of Pennsylvania or Pennsylvania West. She earned both of her bachelor's and master's degree in communication disorders. She brings a high level of energy, an infectious enthusiasm, and a deep passion for supporting students in their language and communication growth. We're excited for her expertise, dedication, and positive spirit she will bring to our teams and the difference that she will make for our students, and she will tell you about her future Highlanders who have been joined us here today. So Mackenzie Swaro.
I just want to say thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. Um, I am so incredibly excited for this new experience and this opportunity. Um, it means so much to myself and of course my family. Uh, as you saw, my two little ones, um, Kenzo and Zara, uh, once they get going, they're hard to reel back in. Um, but they, uh, it means so much to us, and I just so look forward to, um, working with my future students, um, with their parents, with their families, um, with the staff here, uh, and I just want to thank you once again so much. Uh, I'm very excited.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I need a motion to hire Zach Bacatus as a special education teacher at Bachelor's Step One, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment Claysville Elementary, and per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey Education Association Agreement, impending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Welcome. Mrs. Monte.
When you went for a tree, we were so excited and thrilled to welcome Zach to McGuffey School District. I spoke of him earlier about how great our staff is, and he's just going to be an exceptional addition. He's going to be our emotional support teacher at Claysville Elementary. He is a graduate of Liberty University. He holds certifications in both special ed and elementary education. Background includes valuable experiences in alternative education settings, some other experiences in a kind of stepped briefly away from education, and he has been working as a paraprofessional in a life skills classroom. Um, it is clear that his passion for teaching has brought him right back to where he belongs in a classroom of his own. He is committed to providing a nurturing and safe space for our students. We are confident that his heart, dedication, and compassion will make a lasting impact of our lives. If I were a McGuffey student, I would be thrilled to have a Mr. Bacatus with us, so.
Uh, first of all, I want to thank all of you for giving me this opportunity. It's been a long time coming for me, and, uh, there's, like I said, there's nothing else I'd rather do in my life, and now I'm able to do it. And, uh, what a great day it is for me to become a Highlander. Thank you again.
Thank you. Welcome.
I need a motion to hire Adrian Day as assistant principal at a salary of sixty-five thousand, prorated if necessary, subject to assignment, current assignment Claysville Elementary School, and per the terms and conditions of the McGuffey School District Conversation Plan for school administrators and supervisors, impending receipt of all required clearances, Act one sixty-eight verifications, and medical exams.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Ober, Mr. Kern, Mr. Thomas, members of the board, colleagues, and guests. It is my pleasure to introduce Mrs. Adrian Day, Claysville's new assistant principal. Mrs. Day received her undergraduate degree in art from Washington and Jefferson College. She completed her bachelor's in art education from California University of Pennsylvania, her master's of ed in art education from Edinburgh, and her master's of ed in leadership from Penn West, California. Adrian has eighteen years of experience as an elementary art teacher. She has been a teacher at Trinity for the past seven years. When they called her references, they raved about her leadership skills and the incredible art shows that she organizes for Trinity School District every year. And I know she will accomplish great things here at McGuffey too, and I look forward to having the opportunity to work with her. Please join me in welcoming Adrian Day.
I am so excited to be here. I cannot wait to get started, um, this process with the whirlwind, um, but that's a good thing. And I just think from the first interview, I truly enjoyed speaking to everyone around the table, and as soon as I left, I told my husband, what an enjoyable interview experience is that? If I get to work with these people, I will be very blessed. So I cannot wait to get started, and I just thank you so much for considering me and allowing me to take this position this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion, um, I'm making a motion to recess to executive session to discuss personnel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. We will recess for executive session at seven twenty-nine P.M.
It is now eight twenty nine P M and it is time to reconvene and restart the regular school board meeting. We had executive session to discuss personnel.
Sorry, that's okay. Trying to clean up my mess.
Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation for employee number two six one nine effective August first, twenty twenty five and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
Second.
Discussion.
What position is it for?
It says under executive contact.
Oh my goodness, okay, I was missing it, I'm so sorry, thank you.
That's okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain, motion carries. Need a motion to change the status of Jay Allen to a part-time armed police officer for the twenty five twenty six school year per the terms and conditions of the substitute police agreement.
Some moves. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. As a part-time armed police officer for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the substitute police agreement.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Shane Bain, school security guard for the remainder of the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to rehire Mr. Michael Uchel as a substitute security guard for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the job description for a secondary principal, grade six-to-twelve, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the salary adjustment of five thousand dollars for Mr. Mark Bonus, secondary principal, grade six-to-twelve, retroactive July first, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the job description for an associate principal high school, grades nine-to-twelve, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the salary adjustment of eight thousand dollars for Mr. Brady Stoy, associate principal high school, grades nine-to-twelve, retroactive to July first, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the job description for an associate principal middle school, grade six-to-eight, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the salary adjustment of eight thousand dollars for Mr. Justin Wise, associate principal middle school, grade six-to-eight, retroactive to July first, twenty-twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Um, Jason, could you explain to the public what all they're doing, the subtitles of, or maybe Dr. Oberg, the titles have changed because they're going from three to, I mean, from four to three?
Yeah, motion carries real quick.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Sure, absolutely. So, um, at the request of the board, we are moving into the new school year, having a new model for our middle school and high school. We were moving from two principals at the high school and two at the middle school to now having Mr. Mark Bonus act as our secondary principal, six-through-twelve, and he'll oversee both high school and middle school. And then under that, there will be two associate principals, one representing the high school and one representing the middle school. Again, Mr. Brady Stoy will be our associate principal for the high school, grades nine-through-twelve, and Mr. Justin Wise will be the associate principal for the middle school, grade six-to-eight.
Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the sabbatical leave of employee number eight-four-one as requested for the first semester of the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the list of high school club advisors for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Discussion?
Yes, I, I'm just going to put this out there. I think we have a great school, great programs, and we keep talking about cost-effectiveness and all these stipends. I know it's contractual, and if the, the club runs, they have to get the money. So I think if we got to cut something, they should go. That's why I'm going to vote no. But I do want to make a comment. FFA should not be on that list. FFA is not a club project. It is a curriculum program, nationwide curriculum program. It's not like we can consider that option at all. So I hope that made sense.
Could you explain that to me again, Mrs. Shingle?
FFA is a curriculum program. It's not just a club that I join. It's a nationwide, uh, curriculum-based program. That's why we get students from other areas coming here because we offer that program. And if we want to offer that program, then something's got to go. We just can't keep paying and paying and paying. That's, that's my opinion. I'm just saying, if we have to look at cutting something rather than cutting our educational side, then I think those stipends are just gotten out of hand. That's just, that's my opinion. I'm just saying.
Mrs. Shingle, do you realize Renee Cambruzzi, Future Farmers of America Association Advisor High School, is an unpaid position?
That's why I said, did you not hear what I said?
I didn't. I'm confused. That's why I asked.
FFA should not be on the list. It's not a club that you join. That's why I'm saying that shouldn't even be considered on the list. That's not something we can pick and choose about.
Is there, is there an FFA club separate from the FFA program?
Not that I'm aware of.
So could we amend the list to take FFA off of there since it's not a club?
The reason that I was explaining that is I'm going to vote no for all these stipends. And I don't want to vote no for FFA. FFA is a legitimate curriculum program nationwide.
Right.
We can't just say we want to have it or we don't.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused now. Okay.
Derek's contract. That's right. Mm-hmm. Right.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
So to go to Ms. Fries, we can't amend that because it's part of the contract.
Yeah.
Including the FFA. Because I think that's where I got confused was I agree it's not a club.
Be in there. You're just talking about the sponsors. I'm talking about those, all those clubs.
But if it's contractual that they're considered a club, then that's something we have to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
But to clarify what was being said, because I totally got lost there with, I agree it's not technically a club, but if it's contractual that it's considered a club, then that's why it's on there.
But there might have been a reason before. Maybe there was a FFA separate club. We don't know.
Right.
Yeah, but we have no idea.
Never could be. It's on your fair.
There wasn't. So it, it might have been there for years.
Loan, loan.
They volunteer.
And I'm okay with that. If they're volunteering, that's wonderful. But to pay, and I know it's a contractual thing. I hope I'm making that clear. Thank you.
Yeah, but National Honor Society is a national thing, same as FFA.
Yeah.
Student Council is everywhere. Like, there's none you could really get rid of.
Okay.
McFriends is best buddies, basically. That's everywhere.
But does everybody need pay to sign? No. Your answer is yes, because it's contractual. So then my answer is I'm going to say no to these.
Right.
Except for FFA. I mean, I, those people are qualified teachers. I mean, and they own that program.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
No problem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Uh, that would be me.
Abstained?
I do want to make known that I am voting for the Cambruzzi and leisure for the FFA. Thank you.
One abstained, one voted no. So, motion carries. Yep. All right, we're gonna be off. Thank you. Need a motion to approve the individuals listed below as substitute custodians for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Ashley Durk as a long-term substitute teacher for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve Jessica Ashmore as a long-term substitute teacher for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the following substitute teachers as building substitutes for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year per the terms and conditions of the current bargaining agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications. Courtney Crowe, Michaelene Cass, Nicole Siffick, and Chelsea Craig. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to hire the site coordinators for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year pending receipt of all required clearances as listed below.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries.
Mr. President, could I have a second?
Mrs. Shingle, I'm sorry. I, I still didn't understand what you was saying. So if I did something or said something, I'm sorry.
You didn't do anything. I, that's what I wanted to say.
I wasn't understanding.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think volunteers would be nice for those. That's also the point I'm making. Thank you.
I need a motion to approve the following list of substitutes for placement on the twenty-five-twenty-six substitute teacher list pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the list of candidates as presented for emergency day-to-day substitute teachers for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year pending receipt of the PA Department of Education emergency permit, all required clearances, and Act one sixty-eight verifications.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the twenty-five-twenty-six substitute cafeteria list as presented.
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Can I just say that we would appreciate any community members that want to be substitutes because we are really hurting for some of these subpositions, especially for cafeteria workers. We have this lonely lady being our only sub at this time. So please, apply to be a sub.
Can we put that on Facebook?
Yeah.
Because that's how we get our speech.
I have a.
I have a question about subs, since you mentioned that, with, I know there's permanent building subs that are hired and then the daily subs. Are permanent subs ever used in the cafeteria, or is that something that they would not do there specifically for teaching? Okay, I was just curious. Is there a permanent building sub we could get for cafeteria? I don't know. Okay. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Okay. I was just curious.
Yeah, thank you.
Sometimes it says on there, most things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Or they're on multiple lists. Yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the twenty-five-twenty-six substitute paraeducator secretary list as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the revised list of football assistant coaches per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight verifications. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated. So we're approving the football and the girls soccer that's listed underneath.
Yep.
So moved.
So moved.
So, hold on, I'm confused.
All right, can we get a second real quick?
Second.
All right, now discussion. Sorry, Ms. Fries.
No, 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 it's okay. It was about, what, what is missing where? Because I see girls soccer on the list.
Up in the recommended action.
So. Okay, can I make a motion then to amend the recommended action to include, does it need to be that way?
Woman the motion, amend the motion.
All right, we have a motion, so we need a second for that.
Oh, second.
All those in favor of amending the motion to include the girls soccer coach as well, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. So the new motion, need a motion to approve the revised list of football assistant coaches and girls soccer coach per the terms and conditions of the agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and McGuffey Education Association, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act one sixty-eight. Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the first student in GGC school bus van drivers for the twenty-five-twenty-six school year pending receipt of all required clearances as presented.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying, motion carries. Need a motion to approve the business administrator to explore, to explore and secure a temporary line of credit with local financial institution.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Opposed?